Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We call the Tuesday, October 13th, City Council Public Hearing and Regular City Council Meeting to order. This time I'd ask that you rise for the invitation. I ask Chief Thompson to deliver the invitation this evening, followed by the pleasure of the legits. Chief?
Good Lord, thank you so much for this time we can spend together, learn from these very bright individual people just running this all-American city. I appreciate your kindness to us, I appreciate the guidance, I love you so dearly. Thank you. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Okay, welcome everyone. At this time, Chair will entertain a motion to waive the reading and approve the minutes of Tuesday, September the 8th, 2015 Regular City Council Meeting. Is there any discussion hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed by nay, motion carries. Presentation this evening, first off the bat, this is the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Do we have anyone from?
Nobody.
Nobody's here. Okay. So we'll hold this proclamation in case they come, if we have another meeting, but if we don't hear from them, you'll please forward this on. But we are proclaiming the month of October, as many of you know, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Okay? I'll read that for you, Mayor. Recognition of new hires. We have one from the Fire Department, for sure. Mr. McFarland? Is that Chief coming in?
No.
Mr. McFarland, I will ask you to, well, come on down front, let's let everybody see you. Come on, I don't know how to hug you. Brother, if it's not like that. So Mr. McFarland has joined as a recent volunteer, with a couple others, but you beat him to the punch. Your call number is 35. You have a nickname yet?
Working on it.
Yeah. I forgot about that. So let's welcome him to the city, we're glad to have all of you. But in true volunteer fashion, there's a structure fire that just happened, and he's here, and he's worried that he's supposed to be here and not be there, he doesn't know where he's supposed to be, but I think you're in the right place. If the chief's looking for you, tell him that you were, he was supposed to be here.
What does he call me?
Uh, 35. You won't be telling me your name and, uh, that's what we, uh, say that for next time. So we're glad to have you, we don't have enough volunteers, so thanks for giving up your time. Uh, any other, nothing else, no other introductions or hires?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Chief!
Yes, sir.
Chief, you've got some.
Three.
Three, please come down front, Chief.
Thank you, Senator. Please, the council, I've got three officers here, they're brand-new, but they're not brand-new. Josh Ward is from Florence County, a city, I stole him from Florence City.
Florence.
And Ben Lofton, stole him from Darlington City, and, uh, it's...
How about recruiting him?
Well, I'm telling the truth, but nothing...
We're trying to kill all this deal.
We're working on that too, sir. Anyway, um, he's got a rough road with me because I knew his upbringing, I know his family, so. And Russell Galloway, Russell and I go back so far, we don't even talk about dates, and we don't talk about what we got on each other, but Russell was my corporal with, uh, they call it DNR now, but it was while I was in Marine Resources, back then, Law Enforcement Division. He was my supervisor and took care of me and handled me as best he could, and he come over with me to the sheriff's office, and we worked together for a few years there. Russell was the court, mostly family court officer there, and I take my hat off to him all the time because of what he had to put up with. But now he's our court officer here, and he's among other things, he'll do anything that he needs, and these guys will too, so I'm very proud to have him on board with us.
Yep.
And I thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys. So any of you that have kids and grandkids, Ben's parents own miniature horses on the back way that, um...
He's obsessed with it.
Timminsville, no, the hawk, where's it, Timminsville?
Timminsville, yes.
Take him out there.
That is true, you can tell me anytime.
We're glad to have you guys, thank you all for being a part of our team. Russell just finished his detail guarding the governor when she came to the race, so he has executive experience.
He's been doing that for a few years, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, but I mean with us, this is his first duty. And he was assigned to our former fearless leader, Judge Holt. Many of you remember the Holt administration, we call those the dark years. I call it, I don't know why. Yeah, no, it's, um, he was a, he was a fine servant of the people. Michael is, um, Judge Holt is upset with us because we took his right-hand protection, so now he doesn't feel so safe anymore, but we're glad to have you here.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So thank you, gentlemen, I know you guys have worked like fifteen hours today, so if the manager's okay with it, everybody but Jerry can go, right?
Yes, sir, pretty much so.
Or Jerry, too.
She's had enough of me days.
I think Adam Chaplin is staying.
Well, he drew the short straw.
Thank you, Mayor.
Good to see you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Captain.
I knows by much, come on. For sure, see you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, um, next item on the agenda, Dr. Chapman is here for a presentation and update for the Museum Commission Annual Report. You should have, have this in your packets, but he's going to touch on a couple highlights. Dr. Flores, yours?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the City Council, just two main points, first of all, the museum appreciates the city's support, as it has so for many years, and the most exciting thing is phase two of the museum, you may remember several months ago, or probably earlier this year, when Bobby Goodson came in and gave a presentation on the remodeling plan for the old messenger office at the end, right behind the Family Mart, next to the museum, etc., where my name is part of it all, and we're very excited about that phase of development, especially with the development, the remodeling of the College Avenue, and the two parking lots, and the opening of the New Mantis Hotel, we think that new corridor is just going to be a very nice, I guess, aesthetically, pleasing side.
And a restaurant going in, besides your...
And a restaurant, and this little parcel furniture company went, so we're very excited about that phase, and bids are in the process of going through the city's guidelines of those bids going out, and that'll be forthcoming, hopefully, we'll see some good work next year.
You're good to go. Members of council, any questions for the chair? Um, your expansion, I can't find it, I'm looking for it in my packet, when is, when are you anticipating getting started on that?
It was, um, I think we're in the process of putting out the information and the bids...
Pre-bid stuff?
The pre-bid information, and then that would, we'd have to sit for those, and listen to them choose, and that was very exciting.
Okay. Well, we're anxious to see how that goes, like you said, you guys own one of the last remaining pieces of available real estate in downtown, so...
That's true.
Everything will be finished when you guys are gone.
Yeah.
Okay, anything you need from us, sir?
Just continued support, like you have been, so I appreciate that.
Thank you for taking the time to come this evening.
Thank you all.
Madam Director, anything you need?
Good.
Okay, thank you as well. Okay, items filed with the general manager's update, madam manager, we've got our calendar.
Yes, I just want to point out, also, as far as you should have the branding and marketing shirettes that we are doing, is just part of the goals that we set for this year, the signage, so first we have to do branding before we can do our signage. The ones that elected officials need to be at is day one, at one o'clock, at City Hall, six o'clock, at Communitywide Town Hall, you'll mark the, also, the amount as well, and then on day three, at six o'clock, the brand presentation.
Right, um, one of those is on Election Day?
No, Tuesday's Election Day.
Yeah, so...
That's not, these are Monday and Wednesday.
One of the shirets is on Election Day though, right?
There's a nine o'clock with the merchants, ten o'clock with the team, and then four o'clock Steering Committee, that's it.
Okay. So the Steering Committee shouldn't interfere with any of that, then?
No.
Perfect, that's, we just had a question, Councilman Shirley wanted to make sure.
No, I just need you guys on Monday and Wednesday of that week.
Okay.
And then, um, also Jessica wanted to extend an invitation as well.
Yes. Um, I wanted to thank you all that were able to make it to the reception last Friday, they really enjoyed you all, Miss Matt, I'm thinking that we should talk about, um, this is a group of people that are staying in our area for seventeen days straight, our hotels are at full capacity, uh, so we want to welcome them as much as possible because they have the potential to come back every four years. So that being said, this Thursday at 5:30 in the Deloitte Center, they're having their opening ceremony to the public, um, the 2013 American Idol winner will be coming in quite nicely, I don't want to give it away, to sing the National Anthem, and that is a free event, free food, free drinks, and a live auctionist to follow. Um, also, the weekend of the 24th, sorry Natalie, I'm talking more than I should, um, the Baylor Ball Invitational, initially we wanted to get sixteen teams, I found out last week that we're at twenty-three teams, and then I found out today that we're at twenty-six, so I'm trying to work out something with Camden now to get room rates because we don't have room in Hartsfield, so more good news press.
And then I was gonna let the captain invite you guys to his coffee with a cop.
Captain?
Yes, we're having on October the 19th, from 8:00 a.m. until 10:30 a.m. at Shoney's here in town, we're having Coffee with a Cop. And what that basically is, it was done in Charleston, it's done all over the United States as well as overseas, it's a program that was started quite a few years ago by two police officers, and it was funded by the federal government, the funding ran out, but the program continued on, and so what it does is, it basically is designed to break down the barrier between the community and law enforcement. So there's no agendas, there's no speeches, nothing is preset, you basically have a venue, which we have Shoney's this time, and we're gonna try to do it more than one time, where that they're gonna offer the coffee for free for this two-and-a-half hour period, and we will have several of our officers there, our staff, as well as some of the detectives, street officers and whatnot, drug agents. We will be there for the two-and-a-half hour period when people come in from the community, then, and everyone's invited, it's basically just a time where you can come in on a first-name basis, sit down over a cup of coffee, and talk about whatever you desire to talk about. So we get to this level where it's a first-name basis, and it's not that cop in the white car that drives down my street and waves at me, or that cop that comes when there's a problem, we get to know each other, we have time to sit down, and it's not just when there's a problem, now we can sit down on a one-on-one level and try to become two people talking. So we're hoping that this will work here, it's worked in other cities, and it will help break that divide, whether it's a racial divide, whether it's a us versus them on either side, whatever the divide is, I'm hoping to break that barrier, break that wall. So this is the start of hopefully many more.
We're providing coffee?
No, Shoney's is actually providing the coffee.
Shoney's is providing coffee. Breakfast, if you want breakfast, you're welcome to eat, but it's...
Yeah, you're gonna have to pay for that at Shoney's. Can't afford that, unfortunately. Yeah.
I was trying to get him to buy mine, I don't know.
Yeah, no, I'm not buying you, I will buy Miss Natalie's tea if she wants it.
Wait, so that's in your packets on your calendar, right? Yeah.
And if any of the council members want to come out and participate in this, we'd love to have you.
Will you, uh...
What's that date again?
October 19th.
Oh, that's good.
From 8:00 a.m. to 10:30 a.m.
Get with me...
Which will be next month.
Tomorrow, we'll see if we can't round up some funds from the community to see if we can't get some donuts or something.
Oh, you gotta bring the donuts into it.
Did I say that was a donut? Basterds. The donuts is for me, I assure you.
Well, I do eat donuts.
Me too.
Just one.
But so, yeah, let's see if we can, we can round up some stuff, but thank you, that's a wonderful opportunity.
But I'm hoping it'll, it'll help bring the community and law enforcement together as one, it's the start of a lot more to come out, so.
And I wanted to let everybody know that some of your officers are now working out with the F3 group that builds community leaders, and so that is a wonderful integration, letting people know that we're more than just policemen and women.
And we have our bicycles back, we're getting ready to restart the bicycle patrol, which will be back on the street very shortly, we're getting volunteers right now, if I have enough volunteers, I don't have to do volunteer.
Gotcha. All right, so we'll see you at breakfast, council members, if you can, make a point to be there, we appreciate it. Any questions for the manager?
Be a chunk, y'all still offer your ride-along from time to time, don't you?
Yes, sir, we do, all you have to do is come into the, come to the department and fill out a ride-along form.
Okay.
And we can do, you can go up to four a year, it's four-hour periods, or five a year, excuse me, four-hour periods.
Okay, it's been a while, and you've got some new faces.
We have a lot of new faces, yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The only other thing I wanted to point out, um, thank you, James Clemmons is not here, but his crew and a part of them, they didn't make any job stepping through the storm.
Yes.
We were extremely fortunate in Hartsfield, but, um, they had everything cleaned out and ready to go, so, actually, our speaker called to ask what we did differently in Hartsfield, and I just said we had everything cleaned out, and we were just hopeful, so it worked well for us this time, we were very lucky.
The downtown drains did their job, and we gave out sandbags ahead of time, yeah, so hats off to them, for sure.
The little kitchen pond down at the old Red Fox, that's the first time I've ever seen water.
I wish you'd taken a picture of it.
But it didn't have enough to get up into the spillway, you know, drop off it, but it was a lot of water, too.
Bob's pond was getting a little high, but, um, they had it drained out, it was okay.
Oh, yeah.
They had it out there.
Well, so the, uh, Howard Patrolman that lives over there called me, asked me about how much that would hold, and I said, you know, if they drained it completely dry, but it's like fifteen feet of water, and he said it did its job, you know, he, they lost a hot water heater every time it flooded down there, just about burned their house down. Chandler, that's who it was, that's down there. Okay. Anything else, madam manager?
No.
You just got back from your conference in Seattle?
Yeah.
And you learned that Hartsfield's better than Seattle?
Absolutely.
All right. Yes, ma'am.
Before you go on, I would like to, um, I went to the field trial reception.
Oh, yeah, I was gonna mention it when Jessica was here.
Okay, she went, she...
I see a video of you singing.
That's what she was telling me about. American Idol.
I really, really had a good time, and had I known that's what I needed to do, I mean, I would've, you know, totally dressed up and performed a full act, but...
Are you thinking about this as a career profession?
No, 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 it's just, I'm an icebreaker.
Yeah.
And so everybody had a great time, I mean, that country Patel, with my hands and dance.
He was mushin' too, I think.
He was mushin', he was mushin', and just got him hung, hanged up, and then I got him dancing. But it was so much fun to see how the people responded to my being there and, by my knowledge, the van, and going in and doing my, that bit performance.
Glad that it went well, um, is there a recording of it? Let me see that. Um, there are fifteen hundred people in the field trial organization that are here over the next...
Jessica told me a thousand today when I spoke with her.
Okay, I had heard fifteen hundred, being a politician, I'm going to hire them.
Just go with it.
Count the dogs.
It was the biggest.
There was a couple that drove from California, drove, you dropped, drove the trailer over here with the dogs in it, in a group from Seattle, they drove all the way down here.
I recruited them, I'm sure.
That was a long ride.
Yeah, I gotta tell you, kind of on the back of that, I went downtown to eat with Carrie the weekend, and it was fun to see people eating on the sidewalk because the weather was great, and just listening to them, I was wearing my blue jeans and, you know, the time, listening to people talk about the city, that this was their first experience here, and it really felt good that the city was doing, doing well, and she was, she was booked solid. All right, there's nothing else, items for the consent agenda will be received without objection, if they stand approved. We're gonna move into a bunch of public hearings and unfinished business. Item six on the agenda, um, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4212, if the manager will publish.
An ordinance to amend Hartsfield's Chapter 82 Utilities, Article II, Water, Royce Water Division, Division One generally, Division Two industrial use by the addition of language and repealing of language as set forth herein.
Okay, you've, um, you've heard the public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4212. At this time, Chair will open the public hearing, if you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4212, if you will please rise, state your name for the record, come to the front, please leave your comments to two minutes or less. Hearing done, Chair will close the public hearing and entertain any motions. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass ordinance 4212. And there's a motion in the second, any discussion, um, I'd ask the Chairman of the Finance Committee, did you, did you wish for the Finance Committee to have any oversight in this?
Notion.
Okay. Without any further objection or discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye, opposed by nay, ordinance 4212 passes. Item seven on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4213, if the manager will publish.
An ordinance to authorize the sale of real property of the city of Hartsfield, located on West Corner of South Ford Street and Marquee Highway, Hartsfield, South Carolina, tax map numbers 056-00-01-017, other matters are later there, too, and Mark from the Kier South Foundation is here, if council has any questions for him.
Okay, you've heard the, uh, publishing of ordinance 4213, this time Chair will open public hearing, if you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4213, if you'll rise, state your name and address for the record, please come to the front, leave your comments to two minutes or less. Hearing done, Chair will close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass ordinance 4213.
Second. There's a motion in the second, is there any discussion on the ordinance? Hearing done, all in favor signify by saying aye, opposed by nay, the ordinance passes. Uh, item eight on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4214, if the manager will publish.
An ordinance to renew the Hartsfield 2020 contingency plans for the adoption of the South Ford School here in July with the neighborhood revitalization strategy.
Okay, this time the Chair will move to open the public hearing on ordinance 4214. If you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4214, if you'll rise, state your name and address for the record, please come to the front, leave your comments to two minutes or less. Hearing done, Chair will close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass ordinance 4214.
Second. There's a motion in the second, is there any discussion? Hearing done, oh, sorry, discussion from the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to let you know that the Oversight Committee met last Thursday, and there was some concern about, um, the Lincoln Village acquisition, um, but I explained it to them so that we could go forward with the entire project.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's just the way it was, and, and as you and I talked, we're gonna look at correcting...
Policy.
Policy.
Okay, so the recommendation of the Ad-Hoc Committee would be to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor signify by saying aye, opposed by nay, the ordinance passes. Item nine on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4215, if the manager will publish.
An ordinance to lease the property at 106 East Carolina Avenue from Spahnewitz LLC.
Okay, this time the Chair will open the public hearing, if you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4215, if you'll rise, state your name and address for the record, and please leave your comments to two minutes or less. All right, hearing done, Chair will close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass ordinance 4215.
There's a motion in the second, is there any discussion?
I would like to know what office would be in.
The Main Street office and Jessica's office, the tourism office, and the plan is to have them in the back, and the front would be kind of like our pop-up shop, so we could sell Hartsfield, local Hartsfield items, a lot of visitor centers have this, it doesn't make sense really to sell these items out of City Hall, we don't have enough room, so the plan is to put that next door and make it more of a true visitor center for Hartsfield.
Great. Spahnewitz is...
The name of the Lloyd's LLC.
Okay. I couldn't figure that one out.
Behind it.
Okay. The more, that's the, the people that bought the building, that's their company, yeah. Okay, um, any further discussion?
And I will point out, this was budgeted, um, this year as well, to lease that property.
Okay. Do you have a motion on the floor? Okay. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor signify by saying aye, opposed by nay, ordinance passes. Item ten on the agenda, public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4216, if the manager will publish.
An ordinance to authorize the purchase of land at tax map parcel number 056-07-01-038 and a portion of tax map parcel number 056-07-01-042 to satisfy acquisition requirements of the Land and Water Conservation Fund conversion process for Lee Street and North Hartsfield Athletic Fields, Hartsfield, South Carolina, 29550. I do want to point out that today we received the appraisal for the North Hartsfield Athletic Fields, it was higher than expected, so the city may have to purchase an additional piece of property valued less than twenty thousand, um, to satisfy, to truly satisfy the conversion process. Mary Catherine is following up to see if we could actually spend the excess funds on improvements of the property instead of additional acquisitions, but we don't, we don't know that yet, so. This is a step, but we still probably will have to purchase another small piece of property. The appraisal for North Hartsfield Athletic Field was a hundred and sixty thousand, more than I expected.
Yeah, that's a lot. Um, okay.
It's sixteen acre, fifteen or sixteen acres, so it is larger than I thought, too.
Still a lot. Um, okay, you've heard the presentation of the ordinance 4216, Chair will open the public hearing, if you'd like to be heard on ordinance 4216, if you'll rise, state your name and address for the record, please leave your comments to two minutes or less. Hearing done, Chair will close the public hearing and entertain any motions from the floor. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass ordinance 4216. Motion in the second, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Madam?
Mr. Mayor, um, with the acquisition of the North, North Hartsfield Athletic Fields, uh, my concern is the deal being turned over to the northern lane.
You, you're concerned, uh, tell me what your concern is. You don't want it to be turned over to me?
Yes.
You do want?
Yeah.
That's the, that's the intent of what we're doing.
Okay.
Yeah.
This could take, the conversion process can take up to a year, um, it's a brutal process.
We can't, we can't do that until we satisfy this, because that frees up the land, otherwise they have to pay... they have to pay for it at the appraised value, which they don't have, a hundred and sixty thousand, so that's where we are.
This is the intent. We're purchasing a piece of property so that we can free that up to donate it to them.
Right. And I'll say, by purchasing the Dog Park land, that frees up the ability to give that. Any further discussion?
Yeah, one, one other discussion. Um, discussion. Now, with, with the Dog Park, we still have, we addressed the Pride Park restroom situation.
No, because this is, this, hold on, let me say, this is only land acquisition, so we can pick that up in...
Staff will bring in a proposal, we are getting quotes for that, for a restaurant facility, and we will have to bring it to counsel for a budget amendment.
Yeah.
But we don't have those quotes in yet, but that is in process.
It has been prioritized.
Okay.
Actually, you were there, this prioritized, the, the community outreach meeting we had. So it is put on the fast track, but it's not, it can't be, it can't come from this expenditure, because this is strictly land acquisition. Now, if we find out we can do park improvements with the seventeen thousand, that could go to it, if they allow that, I'll be surprised if they do it. So we're, we actually are working on a few strategies, how we best maximize that spend, so that we could kill two birds with one stone, if you will. And we're kind of not, you know, this just happened, I guess, today.
I received that appraisal this morning.
This morning, yeah.
But everyone received their letters from the center?
Yes, they're in your packets. Should be, I got them.
I just want to make sure that Norwood is going to be able to get this field.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't, I was confused by the letter, because our, I mean, our last communication that he and I had out there was that we were working towards delivering that, but we knew we had to jump through this, this hurdle, and I think he knew that as well, because...
Well, I, I think by it being that it was talked about at the first of the year.
Yeah, so we did, we gave, we gave their office all of the information, but we didn't have a, we didn't have a strategy that we could afford other than sell it, and we knew that, they quickly said selling, it's not an option, we don't have a sixty million. Yeah, so we're well into that, and we should, with all, especially with his help, maybe he can expedite the vacuum though, as far as the land, water conservation, because their, their process can take up to a year. If we satisfy everything, you know, hopefully he'll be able to push that along. Okay, so with no further discussion, all in favor of ordinance forty-two sixteen, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by a nay. The ayes have it. On to new business. Item eleven on the agenda, first reading of ordinance forty-two nineteen, if the manager will publish the order.
An ordinance to extend the lease of the property located at one forty-nine West Carolina Avenue to Eunice Alexander.
Okay, you've heard the reading of the title and the presentation by the manager. This time the Chair will entertain any motions from the floor.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we approve, ordinance forty-two nineteen.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
I, I want to ask, did they just, were they just not able to get up and running?
I can't speak to that.
They moved from the larger location where the restaurant is going to rent this space, and apparently business is not where it needed to be to remain open.
Okay.
Okay, so any further discussion? Uh, Madam, Madam Manager, for the term of the lease, should we not?
Just two additional months is all they're asking for.
Yeah, so the lease shall run for a year from... Close the agenda. Oh. Oh, I see, that's the existing lease you've included in your packet?
Yes.
Okay, that's my question, I was wondering why we... Okay, if there are no further questions, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by a nay. Ordinance forty-two nineteen passes, first reading. Item twelve on the agenda, first reading of ordinance forty-two twenty?
To amend Hartsfield Code, Chapter Two Administration, Article Two Counsel, Division One Generally, Section two dash forty B, compensation of council members.
Okay, you've heard the reading of ordinance forty-two twenty, this time Chair will entertain any motions?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to pass ordinance forty-two twenty.
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Um, I guess, has finance looked at this, does it, there's any... There is something, Bob, can you speak to that? There's no, I spoke with her, there is no added cost to, to city, because you're assuming a hundred percent of that.
Would this be like, um, porting, you mean, the life insurance part would be like porting?
Well, the life insurance part is different, because you are the owner of the policy, but these, when the city, when you leave the city and retire, if you're not vested at twenty-five years of service, it is twenty-five, right?
Twenty-eight for...
Twenty-eight years of service, then you're responsible for paying any portions, because right now, you pay it out of your paycheck. See, it doesn't pay for your life insurance, it comes out of your paycheck, so you, you just pick that policy up.
Yeah, but the question is, is the cost, the portability of it and the cost, so is that something that I need to find out from?
It doesn't change.
The rate doesn't change?
It's based off of, it's based off of your health criteria.
The rate would change periodically, I mean, every year we have new rates.
Right, but it's not, but having it with the city or out of the city doesn't change that. It's not like insurance, I mean, it's not like health insurance where they're picking up a portion of the tab. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I just, I just want to get a clear understanding of that. So, how many years does the life insurance stay?
Well, actually, it doesn't even matter for twenty-eight years, because you don't, the city doesn't pay any portion of it. This is an opportunity that the city gives you...
I thought you were asking to change health insurance.
We are, but she's asking about life insurance.
I'm not, I'm not...
So, li- life insurance is something that the city has people come in to offer, but it, but the city does not pay for any match for your life insurance.
So do we need to do that by ordinance as well?
No, this is something totally different from that. This, this is a part of group health insurance, um, group health insurance.
I, I've just had some complications with my life insurance locating with the, with the changing of the company and everything, and I'm just dragging it all down.
Yeah, so this would be outside of what this is.
I didn't, I didn't even know that y'all had life insurance for the city.
You can, um...
You can elect.
Yeah, so whoever the provider that we let come in, it's just like...
It's through the state.
Okay, so it's through the state.
It's the same.
Through that provider, you can elect to pick up so many units a year at open enrollment without taking a physical.
Yep.
And it's in maybe five thousand dollar increments or something.
That would be, I'll answer that.
Yeah. Ma'am?
It starts at like fifteen.
Fifty, yeah, I don't know. Like Bernie says, at some point, you run out of money in the paycheck pretty quickly to pick up anything like that.
One thing about that, and she has a good partner, Val's a partner, asking that question.
Yeah.
Because a lot of people won't understand exactly what it is. A lot of people, when you come in here, you're thinking one thing, and you may find out another, just like, you just have to say, a lot of people might think that, that the city's paying for your life insurance, whereas you're paying for it.
Yeah. I, I know that I'm paying for, but just like Council member Graham, she's paying for it, and she has the same, both of us have Medicare insurance, and her Medicare insurance is now secondary, and she pays a freight cost because they made her, um, Blue Cross Blue Shield her primary, which causes her to pay a four hundred dollar deductible versus a one hundred and forty-eight dollar deductible.
Well, so this gives you the opportunity, when she, she's not obligated to take it. So when she retires from counsel, she, she doesn't have to participate.
You don't have to participate now, but...
Yeah, I, I understand, but, but I'm, I'm trying to make a point here, it's how the insurance actually works. It becomes more expensive than what you already had, so she's, she's spent money that she did not need to spend.
Yeah, and she, at open enrollment, she probably needs to look at dropping.
Yeah.
Which is now.
Yeah, that's right, you're getting packets. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing done, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by a nay. Ordinance passes. Item thirteen on the agenda is a motion to enter executive session pursuant to the South Carolina Code Freedom of Information Act thirty dash four dash seven, paragraph eight, sub-paragraph one and two, for discussion of negotiations incident proposed contractual arrangements and proposed sale of, purchase of property, appointments to Airport Advisory Board, Architectural Review Board, Board of Appeals, Regarding Technical Code Enforcement and Parking, Beautification and Business Improvement Board, receipt of legal advice relating to pending litigation. Is there such a motion?
I don't think so.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close by a nay. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming this evening. We stand in executive session, if y'all would kindly excuse us.